Good evening, everybody. That sound okay? How about there? Better? Good. Good evening. It is Wednesday, May fourteenth. I call this meeting of the Pierce Hall Independent School District. It is now six thirty-two PM. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five-five-one. At this time, we'll go ahead and move to... Just let the record show, we have two missing members. At this time, we'll go ahead and go to item two, which is the invocation.
Would you please rise? Heavenly Father, thank you for blessing us with this day for your grace, mercy, and love for each of us. We are thankful for the presence of our community members. Bless them abundantly. We also lift up our students and staff as we acknowledge their hard work, commitment, and accomplishments. As we move in Superintendent Dr. Jody Spores, first Pierce ISD meeting of record, we place its agenda into your hands, giving us guidance and wisdom, and fully understand its purpose in making the best decisions in moving Pierce ISD forward. Continue to protect and watch over each of us, our entire community, now and always. Giving you all the praise and glory, in your name, in your name, Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll move on to item number four, the canvassing of the election returns for May third, 2025. For the school board trustee election. So, the board previously selected the May board meeting date as a date to canvass the election results according to election laws. The canvassing for position five will be... Will be canvassed, and we currently have a formal petition for a recount for position six race. The count... The recount will be conducted, and a special board meeting will be held to certify the winner for position six. So, board, the results for position five were Lionel Gandara, six-six-six, and George Cavazos had a number of five-sixty-two. So, if I can have him... Okay. So, the results were Lionel Gandara, six-six-six, and George Cavazos with five-sixty-two. Mr. Lionel Gandara winning position five. So, at this time, if I can have a motion to certify the position five as presented. Can you read that motion? Yes.
Make a motion to certify that the following is the total of all votes received by... Shown by the precinct return for the May third, 2025 Pierce Hall ISD School Board Trustee Elections.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Matthew Aguilar to approve the results for our position five as presented, and seconded by Ms. Mari Benavides. All in favor? Unanimous. Motion granted. At this time, we'll go ahead and certify Lionel. Lionel, congratulations.
Thank you. In the name and authority of the state of Texas, I Lionel Gandara do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Pierce ISD Board of Trustees, position five, of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of this state. So help me God.
Alright, it's that time of year. We'll go to item six, and this is the annual reorganization of Board of Trustees to elect positions of Board President, Board Vice President, and the Board Secretary. So, at this time, I'll open up nominations for president. Do I have a nomination? I nominate Matthew Aguilar.
That motion?
Do I have any other nominations? Being that we have no other nominations, Mr. Aguilar, you are now the new president by acclamation. And guess what? You run the meeting from now on. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Okay. So, now, we're gonna open up nominations for vice president. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Lionel Gandara.
We have a nomination for Lionel Gandara. Is there any other nominations? Perfect. If I could have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Perfect. So, we have a motion by Marco Reyes, and a second by Mari Benavides. All in favor? Congratulations. Lionel Gandara is now the vice president of the school board.
Thank you.
Okay. And lastly, we'll open up nominations for the Board Secretary. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Mari Benavides for secretary.
We have a motion for Mari Benavides as Board Secretary, and a second by Lionel... I mean, by Marco. Any... All in favor?
Do you have any other nominations?
Oh, yeah. Is there any other nominations for Board Secretary? Perfect. I have a nomination by Lionel Gandara, and a second by Marco Reyes. All in favor? Unanimous. Mari Benavides is now the Board Secretary for Pierce ISD. Okay. Okay. Now, we move on to section... Item number three, public comment. Do we have any public comments? Okay. No public comments at this time. So, we'll be moving on to item... Item eight, recognition, student recognition.
Mr. Board President, at this time, we're going to have the principals come up to recognize their students. We'll begin with the principal of Ted Flotus Elementary? Or who are we gonna give it? Okay, Ms. Gina Baker with the intermediate school. Ms. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I would like to recognize a particular class. This class has been very instrumental in the million-word challenge that we've been doing for the campus. Earlier in the year, the class was able to reach a million words, and I am very pleased to report that this class has already reached over three million words at this time. So, this class is Mrs. White's class, and they have read three million, five-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five words. If the students in Mrs. White's class and Mrs. White would please come on up to the stage, please. We are very proud, and they're one of the smallest classes, and they have read the most words.
Awesome.
A special recognition from the class. We have one student in her class that has read one million, twenty-eight words, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine words, all by herself. So, that is Diana Medeline. Thank you, Mrs. White, and Mrs. White's class. Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Tiffany Talamantes from our junior high.
Good evening, board, and good evening, Pierce Hall community members. For junior high, I'd like to have two different recognitions. The first one is the students of the week for the month of April. Students, when I call your name, please come up. Gage Verial. Daniela Mesa Diaz. Brayden Cavazos. Javier Zambrano. Logan Rialme. Camila Olivares. Caleb Clark. Angelie Valdez. Savannah Vazquez. Raven Reyes. Chanel Trevino. And Lacy Moreno. The next recognition I have for Pierce Hall Junior High are the top AR readers for sixth grade. Daniela Cisneros. Luciana Perez. Flavia Gonzalez. Justin Woodard. And Audie Zamzo.
Next up, we have Ms. Melissa Bass with Pierce Hall High School.
So, we have a couple of student recognitions for everybody tonight. We are going to start with our track area qualifiers. I do know that there's some leagues going on, so not all of our athletes are in town. So, our track area qualifiers are Jonathan Viesca, Dylan Wolf, Samuel Martinez, Abel Elizondo, Ethan Vella, Jose Rocha, Steven Herrera, and Brendan De Leon. And then, we also have our track regional qualifiers. Dylan Wolf, Samuel Martinez, Abel Elizondo, Ethan Vella, Jose Rocha, Steven Herrera, and Brendan De Leon. Next, we'll be recognizing our softball team. Our softball team this year finished second in district with an overall record of twenty-twelve and one, and district record of nine and three. They were the Somerset Tournament champions, and Kristen Morales was our district co-MVP. Our Defensive Player of the Year was Elena Zapata. First-team pitcher, Kaitlin Rodriguez. First-team catcher, Jesslyn Gutierrez. First-team outfield, Jerelyn Gutierrez. Second-team first base, Tori Hughes. Second-team second base, Jalissa Vazquez. Second-team outfield, Carly Elizondo. And honorable mention, shortstop, Michaela Hernandez. Next, Pierce Hall High School would like to recognize our UYL regional qualifiers. Kaitlin Gores qualified for regionals by coming in first in chemistry. Amanda Hernandez qualified for regionals by coming in first in feature writing. Kaitlin Rodriguez qualified for regionals by placing second in pros. Lisa Rebhan qualified for regionals by placing second in news writing and fourth in editorial writing. And Sofia Garcia qualified for regionals by placing first in physics. And the last student recognitions that we have for tonight are our top ten percent graduates. These graduates were recently recognized at our scholarship night on Thursday, but we wanna continue to celebrate them. So, top ten percent, that ends up being eleven students. So, with a ranking of eleventh, Delaney Vinton. With a ranking of tenth, Michael Rodriguez. Ranking of ninth, Amanda Hernandez. Ranking of eighth, Nayeli Torres. Ranking of seventh, Eliticia Contreras. Ranking of sixth, Eridan Vera. Ranking of fifth, Liliana Garcia. Ranking of fourth, Jevon Torres. Ranking of third, Alexandria Cerda. Ranking of second, and our salutatorian, Kaitlin Rodriguez. And our ranking of first, and our valedictorian, Adaisy Corea.
Okay. Moving on to item ten A, principal board reports. Okay. We will go to item eight B, employee recognition.
Good evening, board. Good evening, community. I'm so happy to be here tonight to celebrate someone who truly deserves to be recognized, our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carrie Lada. Teaching is never easy, but it's special education takes a special kind of heart. It takes someone who's... It takes someone who sees each student's unique strengths, who meets them where they are, and who never gives up, no matter how big the challenge. That's exactly who Mrs. Lada is. She's the kind of teacher who notices the little things, who cheers for the small wins, and who helps her students feel proud of themselves every single day. She makes her classroom a place where kids feel safe, supported, and most of all, loved. Her students may have different needs, but she sees their potential, and she helps everyone else see it too. Whether it's coming in early in the morning to prepare, or working one-on-one with a child who needs extra support, or just offering a kind word at the right moment. She goes above and beyond every day. She works quietly with a big heart and strong hands, and never asks for recognition. But tonight, we are proud to give it to her. Ms. Lada, thank you for the care you show your students, the support you give their families, and the kindness you bring to our whole school. You truly make a difference, and we're so lucky to have you. Congratulations on being TFE's Teacher of the Year. You've earned it.
Congratulations.
For Pierceall Intermediate, this year's Teacher of the Year is one of our 3rd grade math teachers who, with her exceptional dedication, creativity, and passion for student success, has enhanced the learning experience for our students. From math journals to reviewing with black lights, she has made math engaging and inspired the love of math in the classroom. She exemplifies excellence in the education, and we are grateful for the lasting impact she continues to have in our school community. Please help me recognize our Pierceall Intermediate Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jeannie Robles.
For Pierceall Junior High, our Teacher of the Year is Ms. Erica Cuellar. Through unwavering dedication, creativity, and compassion, Ms. Cuellar has gone above and beyond to inspire our students, support our colleagues, and make a lasting impact. Whether in the classroom mentoring others or leading initiatives, Ms. Cuellar is consistently demonstrating what it means to be an outstanding educator. Congratulations, Ms. Cuellar.
Pierceall High School is proud to recognize Ms. Brianna Segura as our Teacher of the Year. Ms. Segura is an outstanding English teacher whose passion for education, dedication to her students, and commitment to excellence set her apart. In addition to her classroom responsibilities, she serves as a yearbook advisor and cheer sponsor. Roles she fulfills with energy, creativity, and heart. A true go-getter, Ms. Segura consistently goes above and beyond. Whether it's staying late to support a student, volunteering for school events, or finding new ways to inspire learning, she is always ready to help. Her initiative, positive attitude, and unwavering support for the school community make her a valuable asset to Pierceall High School. We are grateful for her hard work and honored to celebrate her as this year's Pierceall High School Teacher of the Year.
Okay, moving on to item 10A, Principal Board Report.
Good evening again. I'm just going to go over a few dates that are coming up for our campus. So first, we'd like to talk about teacher appreciation. We want to give a special thanks to our PTO, Gee's Lemonade, Walmart, our Sunshine Committee, and a special shout-out to the City of Pierceall who provided lunch for our teachers. We are very grateful to them for that. TPRI testing is complete, and we are currently disaggregating our data to give us more of an idea of how our interventions work this year. Tomorrow, we have a group of students who are going to Morgan's Wonderland. May 27th is our annual May Fest that PTO will be putting on. May 29th is our end-of-year awards. June 4th is our kindergarten graduation here at the PAC Center at 9:00. You all are invited, so I hope to see you here. And finally, June 5th, we have our senior walk, and we look forward to seeing our former TFE students walk the halls and encourage and inspire our current students. Thank you.
All right, for Pierceall Intermediate, we wrapped up our STAR testing on April 30th. And last week, we had our track meets along with Teacher Appreciation Week. We had a family engagement event inviting all the families to come and play some basketball on our newly remodeled gym floor, so thank you, Board, for that. We had Career Day yesterday, which we showcased a variety of careers, from horse trainer to volcanologist, so the students really enjoyed those presentations. Our next family engagement event will be our social studies showcases that we'll have from May 27th through 29th, and then our end-of-year award ceremony, which will be June 4th. And we're just continuing on, and hopefully, we can finish the year strong. We already also had summer school planning and are ready to start summer school. Thank you.
For Pierceall Junior High, last week, we showered our teachers with a lot of love, food, goodies for teacher appreciation. They had a lot of fun during that week. Our PTO and we had several community members give donations, so that was very helpful. I know they enjoyed that. We also had our first college career fair at middle school, and it was a success. Students went around looking at different colleges and careers and got some goodies, so that was exciting to kind of get them involved, ready for high school. Tomorrow, our life skills students will be traveling to Morgan's Wonderland for their field trip. Today, we also had our potential ROTC candidates have cadet for a day here at the high school. Tomorrow, our PTO is having movie night, The Sandlot. So come to Junior High if you want to watch The Sandlot. On Friday is our staff workday. We will be planning for the end of the school year and preparing for the first six weeks, so trying to get ahead. May 20th is our GT showcase here at the high school. May 29th is our Powderpuff Game, 7th grade girls versus 8th grade girls. So that's going to be fun, and the boys will be cheerleaders, so that's going to be fun. Our band also said they'd be doing the drum line, so we're excited to have a Powderpuff Game, and that's going to be sponsored by PTO. June 3rd and 4th is our June Fest, and June 5th is our senior walk. So we are excited to close out the year, and we are going to miss these 8th graders handing them off to Ms. Bass. They were a very, very neat group, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Spoor. Teacher Appreciation Week took place last week. So like some of the other principals mentioned, we showered our teachers with love. On Monday, we had breakfast for them. On Tuesday, we had a chip and dip bar. Wednesday, we had barbecue with all the fixings. And then Thursday, the City of Pierceall came in with some burgers for our teachers. There was plenty of giveaways, door prizes, games, and trivia. We gave away pens, koozies, and mousepads with our logo on there, and says, you know, everything says, "We are Pierceall High School." On May 16th, we have the Law Ball going on. We also have Southwest Texas College Graduation taking place on May 16th. We will have three students graduating or walking the stage with a... receiving a construction certification, three receiving welding certification, three patient care technicians, and six graduating with an associate's degree. For a total of 15 students walking the stage on Friday at Southwest Texas College. So we are extremely proud of those students. May 19th is our end-of-the-year sports banquet. It will take place in... here in the PAC Center. On May 20th, we have a life skills tour. We partnered with Junior High, so Junior High is going to bring their incoming life skills students so that they can get a feel for the campus, so that'll take place on the 20th. We have also on the 20th, the GT Advanced Showcase that'll take place in the high school cafeteria. Our end-of-the-year awards will take place on May 21st at 6:00 p.m. here in the PAC Center. The senior walk will take place on June 5th. We'll start... we'll follow the same route as we did years past. We'll start at TFE, then go on to intermediate, junior high, and the students will end at the high school. The senior parade is scheduled for June 5th at 6:00, 6:30 in the afternoon. Summer school, there's no break, so then we keep going. So now we've got summer school from June 9th through the 26th, and our early college-high school summer bridge takes place June 10th through June 12th. And then after that, the second-to-the-last week, which is the week of the 23rd through the 26th, we are wrapping up, or we will be administering our June STAR EOC exams, starting with English and finishing strong with Biology and US History. Thank you.
Now, we'll be moving on to item 10B, Curriculum Report.
Mr. Board President, if I may, I'm going to speak to that. I have been in district now, this is my fourth week, and I've had a chance to meet with the central office leadership as well as our campus principals. And we are conducting needs assessments, looking at what we currently have for instructional materials, looking at assessment data, which we will, in the next couple of weeks, get our STAR and our EOC data back. We are looking at bringing in some changes into focusing really on reading, on literacy, starting with our kindergarten students all the way up through high school English classes, as well as mathematics. And we're looking at aligned programs so that what the kids see as far as techniques, materials, the same thing for the teachers, that we have some continuum from kindergarten all the way through. So we hope to then better serve the students and the teachers. So those are some of the things that we are working on right now. Again, the focus for this year is really going to be literacy and numeracy. And as we go into our summer Leadership Institute, the school board, this team of eight, we will be revisiting our district goals, working with our principals, focusing on growth goals. And again, it'll start with an analysis of where we currently are, what we currently have moving forward with that. So right now, we are looking at what will happen for us for next year. So we will come in June with contracts for instructional materials and implementation services and coaching services for our staff and students for the coming school year.
Awesome. We look forward to it. Moving to item 10C, Food Service Department Report.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Before I start off with the April 2025 monthly report, just a couple of things that's going on on food service. We are preparing for summer school. Basically, right now, I have a few brochures that already came in to advertise the summer school feeding. I know I got an email yesterday from the Service Center. Basically, they are going to come out as well and bring me a couple of more, I believe banners and more brochures, so we can get that out too. I'll be stopping by each campus to meet with the principals to get those brochures, you know, hand it out, however they want to go about it, giving them to the teachers, handing them to the students, and so forth. But anyhow, got already planning for the summer school for the June 2025. I have staff already set up, so we're moving along on that ball. I'll go ahead and start off with the April 2025 Food Service Report. As you review the report, you can see the breakfast meals that were served. As we move down, you'll see the breakfast revenue, our lunch meals served, our lunch revenue. Moving down, you will see the after-school supper meals, after-school supper meals revenue. Our other line will show performance-based revenue, our adult meals and catering, excuse me, adult meals and à la carte totals as well. And our last lines, you'll see the total revenue and what the expenses were. Any questions on that report for me?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 10D, Police Department Report.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Spoor. So for my May Board Report, I just wanted to talk about the shattered dreams. It was really successful to target, you know, the dangers of young drivers and impaired drivers. So I want to thank all the first responders who came out, Fiera County Sheriff's Office, Pierceall PD, DPS, Air Care, and EMS, along with the Funeral Home and the Justice of the Peace Precincts 1 and 3 in Pierceall, towing. Then on the door signs, they came and updated our door signs. We weren't in regulations of what they put on, so they came down and fixed that for us. So we couldn't have repeating numbers on the campus, so now it's 1 through 25, or however many doors are on the building. And then we also got the lock boxes in for the campuses. And with these lock boxes, we can also mount them in front of the gates, and it's going to have a disconnect inside to where, once they just pull that lever, the automatic gates will open for first responders to get in. I'm just waiting for maintenance to get to that ticket, and then we'll have them mounted around the campuses. Then we also issued out the panic buttons for the district. Myself and technology went around each campus and went to each teacher and gave them a little demonstration of how... wanted to use it and how it works. And then we also sent out an email for a quick reference on the panic devices. Upcoming events, we have graduations. We're going to start having meetings for logistics and personnel, and we also have senior parade coming up. Senior Parade is going to be June 5th, the day before graduation. Graduation ends June 6th. We had a total of 14 incident reports and then two offense reports. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10E, Technology Department Report.
Good evening, Mr. President. Congratulations, Dr. Spoor, members of the Board. Daniel Garza with the Technology Department. We're still continuing to assist the HVAC company with the controls being implemented throughout the district. Currently, they're working at high school. Over last Friday, me and Adrian, or two Fridays ago, me and Adrian redid the networking switches at the junior high, so that was a good success. I don't think we left too many things disconnected, right, Ms. Talamontes? And then the data center, we've been upgrading the video surveillance software. Adrian's been working on that. Cybersecurity, we updated the web filtering agent for the Chromebooks with the Lightspeed. Also, for the technology in regards to physical security, we've been replacing some defective surveillance cameras throughout the district as we see fit. What we see, it's deteriorated picture quality or something that's just not working. We also installed some door access controls at the back of the intermediate cafe, the junior high cafe, Tet Flotis, there in that middle booth, that man trap, and also at the back of the Pierceall High School cafeteria as well. at the back of the Pierceall High School cafeteria as well. We're gonna be installing some door intercoms at the junior high. As y'all seen, the gates have been, being installed and erected there throughout the campus, so we will be putting some door intercoms so the parents or visitors can buzz into the gate and the staff can buzz those visitors through. Instructional technology, nothing really going on right now as far as the instructional tech side of the house. And operations in technology, we currently had, or not too long ago, we had S T S recycling come and pick up a bunch of old technology obsolete equipment that's no longer serviceable or usable or any benefit to the district. Also, uh, we've been still completing technology work orders. Those are pretty fairly lo, uh, low. We took a look today and kinda looked at how we're gonna finish out the year, already have those plans in place for end of year pickup. Other projects which has, uh, fencing project, so we got about five remaining gates that we gotta get going. I know we've had an issue with the, some of the gate opener, or one gate opener here. I don't know, was it lightning strike or something, but something fried the board, so they're replacing that under warranty for us. Uh, Dela Garcia had, came out day before us today, or yesterday, and looked at that. And so, hopefully, we get that repaired. We received all the gate openers, uh, push buttons and stuff like that, so we're gonna start giving that out to the staff, make sure the buses get that. And, um, Officer, the Security Officer Tulsa's kinda been locking the gates on the weekends, started, just to do a test run to see, you know, get familiar with the, with the process. So, hopefully, we'll have all these things buttoned up by the end of the school year, or hopefully by, by mid-June. Where are we at? Same thing with the pedestrian gates, we got those new pedestrian gates installed. We had R G. commercial doors come down and rekey to our scheme, so now that way the Grandmaster Key can open those gates, and then we created a, a separate gate key. That way, you're getting through the gate, doesn't mean you get into the campus, so it's still like a two-key for, for a little bit layer of secu, extra layer of security on that. And we have already, I believe Chief County already started issuing out some keys to staff members. Uh, not, moving on to the retaining wall, um, M T. R. engineer says, hadn't heard back from the city. I reached out to the city, spoke to the city manager, and he missed the email or whatever happened, so he reached to, uh, reached out to their engineer in Dallas to see about getting it approved. It's pretty much approved. It's just kind of, just make sure there's nothing in regards still to the drainage or the water flow, if there need, if a study is needed. Uh, one of the things in regards to the, uh, that retaining wall, M T. R. did provide a preliminary construction cost estimate and a civil proposal. That way, we can utilize it to put something out in the paper, to go out for bids, to get that retaining wall. It's like, spoke about before, it's not just building a retaining wall, we're gonna have to tear out a section of the track and rebuild that. Um, we're cutting it pretty close. We need to make a decision. I know I talked with Dr. Spoor briefly, and we have something in line to meet here shortly. Uh, but if we look at the way we have to bid out for fourteen days and do the whole process, we wouldn't start this project till June thirtieth. That would give us thirty-five days without working weekends before the first, uh, football game or meet the Mavericks type, uh, activity. If we work weekends, if Saturdays, if the contractors work on weekends, that's forty-two days. If we get it done sooner, if we can possibly start June twenty-third, that's forty days of work, forty-eight days counting, working on a Saturday. So, it's one of those things that will, I'll be meeting with Dr. Spoor here shortly to kinda discuss it. This is something that we wanna go forward with, 'cause I know it's a pretty big, uh, expense. It's not something that's inexpensive. Daktronics for the scoreboards, so I met with Daktronics, Generation Science, M T. R. engineers, Vela Electric, uh, Andy Reyes Construction in regards to putting in the new displays slash scoreboard. Uh, also met with A E. P., we got an approval for our two-hundred amp service to power that up. Uh, I don't know if y'all seen or heard, but Reyes Construction has been out there, they already cut, cut the concrete, and they're already digging the trench for Mr. Vela to go out there and install the electrical wiring, the conduit and stuff that he needs. He's already delivered the material. Uh, Generation Science is, should be, it's a Daktronic subcontractor, should be here on the nineteenth of May, on Monday, and we'll start drilling for the footings and pouring the concrete, erecting the structural steel and all that good stuff of, with no hiccups or no delays, we're looking, they're looking at commissioning that display scoreboard on May twenty-seventh. On the twenty-eighth of May, we'll be training the technology department and some other key personnel in the district, um, to operate that scoreboard, the display board, stuff like that. And hopefully, we'll be ready to go by graduation. That was a deadline that was given to me way back when we, when I was put on my lap. Any questions in regards to that?
The only thing, the only thing I have, um, is on the surveillance cameras, um, I know you said you replaced defective surveillance cameras. Are, are those warranty cameras or new ones that we just replaced? On, well, you gotta replace defective surveillance cameras at T F. E., intermediate, and P H.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time understanding you. I can't hear you. What?
The, 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 the surveillance cameras, the defective ones, are they warrantable or?
Oh, no, sir, they're older cameras, they're old analog cameras, yes, things like that, yeah. They got like a red-looking display or something, so, yeah.
All right.
And the last thing on my item, just the emergency maps or whatever, the campus maps, those should be coming in probably this Thursday or Friday, though. Shellten Architecture will be done with those, and we'll get this pushed out to the campuses.
Okay, then on the, on the, the display, the football field display, is that the, the closest or the farthest that we had the option to place it, or? I know we had a small discussion about it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so if we looked at putting it on the north end where we had talked about, or where it was first proposed, uh, the engineer from Daktronics said that's too close to the track. And then also with M T. R.'s recom, recommendation of, if we install the sign, we run condo, we do everything we need to do, and then they go and tear up the track, and they're gonna reroute the water from the football field, the drains there, it's gonna start coming out toward the back of the home side, toward intermediate, and then drain into the ditch that way. So, if we put, erected all that structure and did all that and just tore it, tore it out, and then having to regrade, so that's kinda one of the issues. And then, being that it was too close to the track, you know, they, we would be looking at the sign instead of like this, then we would really be at a, kinda looking to your left, so that's why we looked at it and it's recommended, hey, let's just put it on the south end of the, on the field, that's kinda centered for both sides to see. Uh, and there's no, you know, bringing in power, we have to bring up power through the alley, trying to go over the alley. Uh, the fencing still hasn't been, you know, done out there with the retaining wall, so that's why we picked that southern location. And then to try to put it like closer in the track, uh, then you're tearing into the turf, you're tearing into the rock structures, the, you know, all the, what's built down there, right? So, that's kind of more expensive. We put it closer, like, behind the goalpost, or you know what I mean, where that jump, that pad is, so that's why we just decided to put it outside of there, and that's as close as we can get it.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm not familiar with the pixels or whatever they call them, you know, so I'm assuming that's why we push it back, you know, 'cause of the size of it, the screen and all that.
Yes, sir. No, they looked at that Daktronics, they, it's, that was one of the preferred locations.
And I know, I know it was mentioned that the possibility of moving the flagpole, we don't need to move it, correct?
Yeah, I haven't.
I mean, I thi, I think that'd be an extra expense that we definitely don't need to incur, you know, so.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's just my opinion, so.
Yeah, I'll meet with Mr. Esquivel on the, in regards to anything with the flagpole, that was my, what was handed to me was to finish the scoreboard.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Well, okay, okay, I just, I just gotta ask you a question. Um, the question was, uh, how's that, the construction, is it gonna be completed, the, all the rocks coming up, you know, since we park handicap there? I know, but placing the, the scoreboard there, it's gonna create, you know?
How about the, the old one, or the, for the new one or the rock?
For the new one, for the, the placement of the new one.
Yeah, their, uh, Reyes Construction's gonna take up all that debris, and then once they lay down the conduit and Vela installs the electrical wiring, they're gonna re-backfill it, and then they'll pour concrete over the top, just seal that hole, and all that rock stuff will go, that's gonna be gone.
And that, that's not gonna be the way where the handicap parking was at, correct?
No, sir.
Okay.
It's, uh, you know, when you're looking at the weight room where it says, "Home of the Mighty Doggies" or something like that?
Yeah.
It's, it's right down that grassy knoll, that little hill, that's where, where it's going.
Probably, we're probably gonna have to relocate the Home of the Doggies since, so it can be visible?
Yeah, it's gonna, actually, that's a little bit more off to the right, so you should still be good, just, 'cause if you look at the building, the Home of the Doggies, it's kinda right over, like, where the classroom area is, and the scoreboard's kinda right in the middle of that building, right? When you walk out of the, I guess, like, where the weight room's at.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten F. Maintenance and Transportation Department report.
Good evening, Dr. Spoor, school board members. Before I forget, um, I haven't talked to Ms. Gonzalez at Tet Flotes. Next week, um, we'll start again, construction on the, uh, parking lot. The whole week of next week will be, uh, they'll be there working from Monday through, I think, maybe to the following Monday. So, they'll be busy out there. I just wanna say, um, everything's going well, good. Um, I know we're working in, on a couple of projects, but, um, we're staying busy and, you know, we're always busy, so just, uh, bear with us on, on, on the work orders. Uh, yeah, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Freddie?
I don't, I don't have a question on, uh, all I gotta say is that, um, I know the Maintenance Division, you know, in the, in the bus barn, I, I know they don't get the glory like some of us do, you know, within the district. Uh, just wanna commend, uh, you know, the, the bus drivers. Uh, I guess it was May the first when we had a bad storm day. Um, uh, we had an event here at the high school, and, uh, it was possible, you know, uh, damaging hail a, and was in the area. And I passed by T F. E. and, uh, wanted, wanted to check out the lights, and it looks awesome. But at the same time, I saw that there was, you know, buses being driven at that time of the night, you know, I guess eight-thirty or so. And, uh, I just wanna commend your bus drivers, your la, your ladies, like, I'm assuming, not sure the, you know, the names of the ladies that were there. I think you said maybe, Sobre Travino, I can't pronounce the name, Unise Jerez?
Unice.
And Gloria Aguilar, you know, for, for taking the time, uh, the time of the evening to move those buses under that pavilion. You know, it's a work in progress, what we got going on with that black gold, uh, facility, you know, but we won't have to be doing that, but at least it's protection of damage on the buses, you know, that y'all prevented that night. So, just wanna give kudos, and I wanna give kudos to the maintenance, uh, um, the groundskeepers, you know, that throughout the baseball and softball season, you know, they maintain, you know, those fields, you know, awesome, you know, they're, they did an awesome job, so just give our, our kudos to them.
Yes, sir. Uh, everybody there at the Maintenance Transportation, we, we do our best to, uh, for the district. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Freddie.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Stay cool out there. Moving on to item eleven A. Financial, consent agenda, financial information.
Good evening, everyone. On page twenty-nine, you will find the Exhibit C-three for the month ended April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. For our general fund, total revenues were twenty-three million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand, two dollars. Total expenditures were eighteen million, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five dollars, with the excess of revenues of four million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The year-to-date fund balance was thirty-seven million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. For our food service fund, total revenues were one million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Total expenditures of one million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars, with the deficiency of revenues of one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. The year-to-date fund balance was one million, three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars. For our debt service fund, total revenues were two million, eight hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars. Total expenditures were two hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, with the excess of revenues of two million, five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, with the year-to-date fund balance of three million, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Your next report on page sixty-three is the schedule of general fund certificates of deposit. Amounts invested this month were thirty-three million, five hundred thousand dollars. Interest accrued at the end of the month was a hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. And total value at the end of this month was thirty-three million, six hundred and twenty-one thousand, eighty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. On page sixty-five is the schedule of interest and sinking fund certificates of deposit. Amounts invested this month were two million, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-four cents. Interest accrued at the end of this month was ten thousand, sixty-three dollars and sixteen cents. Total value at the end of this month was two million, eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy cents. On page sixty-seven is the general fund investment in the Lone Star Investment Pool. Interest earned for the month of April was four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents. Total interest earned is thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. And total investment plus year-to-date interest earned was one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. That's the final report.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? We have a, have a motion by Marco Reyes?
Second.
And a second by Lionel Ganeda, all in favor? Passed unanimously? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item twelve A. Discuss, consider, and possible action on approving the revised wording for the twenty-four, twenty-five U I. L. stipend list.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Spoor. Um, Pierceall I S. recommends that the P I. S. School Board of Trustees approve revised wording for the twenty-four, twenty-five stipend list that is this current school year. The wording for the U I. L. stipend list needs to be updated to not specify the number of limits of events that can be coached, and this is for academic U I. L. There were some events that were hard to fill positions, and we did have, um, some employees that fulfilled those positions. There was two in particular that coached four events each, and they actually took participants that were recognized tonight for regionals, so, um, we would really appreciate if y'all could approve this.
Does anyone have any comments, concerns? Okay, can I have a motion?
I make a motion to, um, update the U I. L. stipend for the, um, U I. L. stipend to not specify limits on the number of events that can be coached.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Lionel Ganeda and a second by Mari Benavides, all in favor? Unanimous, motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item twelve B. Donations to District.
At this time, we're requesting and recommending approval of the following donations. There was four hundred dollars donated from the San Antonio Livestock to the Pierceall High School F. F. A. Club, five hundred dollars from Kevin Duffy to the Pierceall High School N. H. S. Club, six hundred dollars from the Poco Sueño Cattle Company to the Pierceall High School Junior Class, and eighteen thousand dollars from the G. O. Group Foundation to Pierceall High School.
Can I have a motion? Have a motion by Marco Reyes?
I'll second.
Second by Lionel Ganeda, all in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have item twelve C. Acceptance of the excess proceeds checked from Lineberger, Goggin, Blair, and Sampson L. L. P.
Good evening, Dr. Spoor. This is Ronald Rota with the Lineberger Law Offices. Also with me is Manalise Martinez, uh, one of our attorneys also. She is originally from- She is originally from one school district south of you, actually one county south of you, from Catula. On the agenda, though, it's listed for the check also, but I also want, at the same time, I sent over the collection report for the year. Is it okay to do that or just present the check for excess proceeds?
You can do.
You both? Okay. On the, on the agenda, I have the annual collection report. What I'm going to do is I'm going to start on page five, which is chapter two regarding the mass mailings. And to give you an idea what the process is, so as you know, in October of every year, the tax notices are sent out to all the taxing, to the taxpayers to pay their taxes. From October through the end of the following January, the taxes are to be paid without any type of penalty or interest being assessed. On February first of the following year, penalty and interest started being assessed on those accounts that are still delinquent. If you look on page five, you'll see the breakdown of our mailings. So for example, you see the May twenty twenty-four, thirty-three oh seven resolution mailing. So what that is, is after February first, those individuals that are delinquent for the two thousand and twenty-three taxes, on May first, we send out a letter to all, let all taxpayers aware that if they do not pay their taxes, by July first of that following year, that will be turned over to us for collections and additional penalties will be assessed. So the way we do it is, May twenty twenty, May twenty twenty-four for the tax year two thousand and twenty-three, the thirty-three oh seven resolution mailing was mailed. So at that time, there were about, a little less than, a little more than nineteen hundred accounts that were still delinquent for two thousand and twenty-three taxes. On July two thousand and twenty-four, we had, it went down, we had one thousand, six hundred and nine tax accounts still owing two thousand and twenty-three taxes that was turned over to us for collections. And at that point, we started doing the mailings of the accounts to some point, I'll go into further detail, to go into tax lawsuits. This year, if you see on February two thousand and twenty-five, is what's called the thirty-three eleven resolution. What that is, for taxes that have business personal property due for tax year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, a notice is mailed out to those individuals indicating, instead of being turned over on July first of this year, the statute allows it to be turned over early. Because the BPPs also kind of escaped the areas, places closed down. So notices of two hundred and seventy accounts were mailed out in February. At this point, we are monitoring, making phone calls. And if we've done in the past, if we need to, we do tax warrants and seizures on business. But the last time we've done anything such, that scale was when the oil and gas companies were in town and they were trying to leave the counties, when the Eagle Ford kind of slowed down. After that, pages six and onward are the examples of each letter that I just listed and give you an idea of what they look like. On page thirteen is a targeted mailing. So within the year, we mail letters to anyone who has a tax lawsuit, from original petitions to citations, to set for trials, attorney-in-law is appointed, collection calls, not collection calls, but letters from our collectors regarding these delinquent taxes. So it gives you an idea how our Oracle-based system tracks the accounts and the amount of our calls and activity that is done. On page thirteen, page fourteen, chapter three are the taxpayer, taxpayer assistance. So we have our collectors who do, who do the outbound collection calls, which we have listed there. And on the next page, page fifteen, we have the inbound collection calls or phone inquiries and walk-ins. So every month, if someone calls, sends a letter, sends correspondence, it's uploaded into our system and that information is placed and recorded. So anyone calls, the phone number's recorded, the, any letters are recorded, anything that we have is saved for that particular account. Page sixteen are the payment arrangements. Now, these payment arrangements, these are not done with the tax office. These are internal payment arrangements. The tax office requires a certain down payment. If those individuals cannot make a down, down payment, we say, you will pay something, we'll give you a thirty-day hold, just pay something. As long as they're making those smaller payments, we keep it on hold. But at a certain point, if they need to get on a formal payment contract. Once they get a formal paper contract, it prevents any type of tax lawsuit from being filed. If a tax lawsuit is filed, a payment contract prevents any property from being foreclosed upon. So long as they stay current with a payment contract, either a lawsuit will be filed, if a lawsuit's filed, it'll prevent any foreclosures. The tax statute allows a payment arrangement up to thirty-six months. Page seventeen are the address and ownership research. So taxpayer, when they move, buy a house or so forth, they file their deeds with the county clerk's records. The appraisal district gets the county clerk's records and goes based upon the address as listed on that deed. If the owner moves or goes somewhere else, it's the taxpayer's responsibility to go to the appraisal district to make those updates to the appraisal districts, to the appraisal district, so also they'll get their tax roll notices. So when a property becomes delinquent, we do the mailings when it comes to it, we get return mail, we do a skip trace. The skip trace finds the new location of the owners, we send the letters to those new owners of the delinquent taxes. Now, the information we find of the new owners cannot be changed on the tax roll, cannot be changed by us on the appraisal roll. Against, under statutes, the responsibility of that taxpayer to go in to the appraisal district, make those updates on the address. So we get individuals who call and say, oh, how'd you find me? The tax office couldn't find me. Have you changed your address? Well, no. Well, then you need to go to the appraisal district and make those changes at the, for your new address to get notification. Page eighteen are title research. So at certain point, if there's no payment arrangements, no tax deferrals filed, no, no response from any of the taxpayers for real property, we request title or abstractor comes down to the county clerk's records, pulls the title records for anyone who has an interest on a property. So when a property is ready to be, suit is ready to be filed on a real property, all the individuals who have an interest, from title owners in fee, to the lien holders, to those judgments, mechanics liens, to the child supports from the state, if they're filed with the county clerk, they're included in the tax lawsuits. So on page eighteen, we requested thirteen, we received ninety-nine total. Now, doesn't mean we file suit, because once we get the title, they got a payment arrangement and they paid off the tax and so forth. Next page will show the lawsuits filed for the year. We filed fifty-eight lawsuits, totaling over a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Within that time period also, we did nineteen tax judgments, which means when a lawsuit is filed, the sheriff serves those individuals, they get a citation. If they have not paid the tax, we set it for trial. Once we take, we go to trial, we take a judgment against the property. So we had nineteen judgments over a hundred and nine, a hundred and nine thousand, nine dismissals and thirteen releases. When a release is, when a judgment is entered, that's a lien on the property. When they pay those judgment liens, we release the judgment with the district clerk's office. Page twenty of the tax warrants. Now, these are mineral tax warrants, we filed four, totaling a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. These are royalty interest owners. So how this works is you operator has a lease, there's royalty interest owners within that lease. Every royalty interest has a percentage, they send out royalty check every month. You're taxed for that, it's considered a real property. We reach out to the royalty interest owners about the delinquent taxes. If they don't do anything, we do one of two things. First, one, we send a letter for the operator to suspend the monthly payment. Usually when that stops, they'll come in and pay the tax. If that does not occur, then we have to file a tax warrant. What the warrant does is seize the payment from the op, from the operator to the royalty interest owner and diverts that to the tax office. Once those judgment years are paid, we do a release of the tax warrant and they continue their monthly payments from that point on. So these are four companies within the school district boundaries that have royalty interests that are currently delinquent and we have a tax warrant filed. These don't get paid right away because it's based upon the operator's monthly oil and gas draw. Page twenty is a motion, a motion order also for attorney-in-law items. What this is, is when we file tax loot, if someone is deceased unknown, by statute, we have to appoint an attorney-in-law to the court, appoints attorney to represent the unknown parties or the deceased parties. So when we do go to trial, they were represented with due process in court. Page twenty-one, we go to the tax sales. So we had one, two tax sales in the last year, in both in May and September. Total of ten properties set, zero sold, one struck off and nine canceled. What struck off means is when a property is set for a minimum bid amount and no one bids on the property, the property is struck off to be held in trust by all the taxing authorities until we get it back on sale again. And the way the process works here in Frio County is we get bid amounts, lesser bid amounts or the minimum bid amounts. If we receive a lesser bid amount, we go down to the Frio County Appraisal District where everyone has a representative with, from the school, county and the city and so forth. We take that minimum bid amount, needs to get approval by that, each of the taxing entities for approval, ever approved, we set it for a lesser amount. But it gets back on the books. We also have tax resale, same process as a strikeout properties. These are also struck off properties being held in trust. We had two, we sent it for tax resale for public sale and we sold the two properties, so they got back on the tax rolls. Page twenty-three are the bankruptcy filings for the year. Total, three claims filed, ten accounts totaling over six thousand dollars. As of March, we have three additional coming at about a little more than nine thousand, eight hundred. So bankruptcy attorneys filed their claims with bankruptcy court and through that process, the taxes will get paid through the bankruptcy filings. And then our collections, page twenty-five, as of March, I don't have April's yet, but as of March, from October through March, we're at two hundred and eighty-seven, hopefully try to surpass last year's of one point seven million. And then on page twenty-six, gives you a better idea, the information we have here is from the tax office, it's the collection percentages. So for example, tax year two thousand and twenty-three, the first column are the columns of those that had paid before turnover. So before July first of that year. So for instance, in two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-seven point four percent had paid their tax before it came over me. Within that time period, as of March thirty-first, we moved up to ninety-eight point four percent as of March thirty-first. So you can see the last, two thousand and twenty-two is ninety-eight point six, two thousand and twenty-one ninety point, ninety-eight point eight, and then in two thousand and twenty, about ninety-nine percent. Not going to get a hundred percent base tax because you have those tax deferrals over sixty-fives and those under litigation or under payment, under payment arrangements. So we get as close as we can to that hundred percent mark. Also, for the school district, we do the property value studies. As of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, our property value studies department filed a self-reporting appeal. It's still pending, the deadline to file is past March, they have until the summer. Once we get word of the two thousand and twenty-two four values, if this school will be getting any more revenue from the state, our Robert, Robert Harbach from our property value studies will go ahead and present that also. Now for the check, the reason for the check is excess proceeds. So like I said, when a property is struck off or sold, when a property is sold, so for instance, the minimum bid is a thousand dollars, someone bids two thousand dollars, an excess amount. That thousand dollars covers everything in the judgment and the taxes. That thousand dollars, the excess amount, goes into the district clerk's court registry. Under the tax statute, it is held there, well, first, it's held there for two years. But at the same time, the district clerk is, is responsible for sending out a notice to all parties in the lawsuit for them to come claim the money. That includes the taxing authorities, the former owners, lien holders and so forth. If that does not occur after the two years, the money heats to the taxing authorities pro rata. So for this last couple of sales, we have a check for a little bit more than seventeen thousand dollars, which goes into the general fund. It does not go part of the tax collection. So we'll go in your general fund and use it how you wish. And I'll let Mata deliver the check or who wants it. But you have any questions overall?
Does anyone have any questions for Ronald? Awesome. Thank you, sir.
This is my first time in here.
Okay, moving on to item twelve D, discuss, consider and possible action on the installation of additional fencing at Ted Flores Elementary.
Fencing.
My apologies. So before you, we have the map of the Ted Flores Elementary campus. As where the green is, that's all the fences completed and also the yellow part has already been completed as well. So that all has the eight-foot black commercial wire fence with three-inch post. Only part we have left is what's in the red section right there. And that's about a thousand eighty-one feet of fencing that we wanted to replace that chain link pipe, well, you know, oil field pipe type fencing with that black commercial wire fence. That way it's uniformity, anti-scaling, stuff like that to help improve the safety and of course, the aesthetics to the campus. That would also include eleven panic gates. I didn't realize that there's that many gates in, in that area at Ted Flores, but I have quite a bit of gates in the front area. And so that price for that, I'm seeking for y'all to please approve that project so we can get that completed before the next school year begins and we're looking at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars. It's a thousand, one hundred and eighty-one feet. And again, there's eleven panic gates with included in that.
And this is coming out of the safe grant, the safe grant?
Yes, from the safe grant.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Garza? All right, if I can have a motion?
Why does it say, no, no required action from the board?
It's in the.
The agenda item, your recommended action was not needed, so.
Oh, it should have been approved, sorry about that.
Yeah. It is for sure, the amounts that need to be approved.
This is an action item, it is correct in the agenda, it is an error in the board agenda that was submitted, the agenda item, my apologies for that. But yes, we are asking for approval from the board for funding this project to the tune of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and three dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion by Mari Benavides?
I'll second.
A second by Marco Reyes. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to item twelve E, discuss, consider and possible action on the approval of the food service management company contract for Pierso ISD Food Service.
Good evening, Board. Tonight, I am seeking your approval for the food service management company contract. The contract is TDA approved. I do have the approval letter, I was not able to submit that to y'all, but I do have that, I'll give you guys a hard copy once I'm done. Basically, I'll go ahead and explain the process. TDA changed the rules and regulations, so we went out for bid in November. And basically, that's a process to do a template, submit information that they require. Came March, we had part of the RFP requires a pre-proposal meeting and that as well was done. I had about six vendors come out and we met up at the central office. We did go cafeteria to cafeteria, the vendors had time to look around, take some pictures and so forth, ask questions. They were aware as well that they had to submit their proposal by a certain date, which was in April. I only received two proposals for that, for this bid. Once that happened, TDA requires to score these bids. So I also had to gather a committee together, so there was a total of three of us, including myself, I was the head committee member. Basically, what we. Basically, what we did on that, and you guys have the information as well. I didn't submit the whole entire RFP because we would be here past midnight. So anyhow, you guys do have the Pierceall ISD valuation award. That basically identifies what we did with the scoring cards, how we basically did the tabulization. I can't say that correctly. I apologize. How we tableized that. We basically scored the both vendors. And as you guys can see, as the information that was submitted to y'all, you will see scorecard A and scorecard B. Basically, the, the whole information for scorecard A was evaluating each criteria, which on the evaluation award, you'll see the cost and financial. And basically, that is the main, the main, how would I say it? The main reason we went out for bid, because that contract is a fixed price per meal. And you can see on exhibit G how it is identified on the price. That price would go to the contractor that would get paid to them per meal, depending how many meals that we do do in each campus. We do plenty of meals as well for breakfast and lunch, so that, that is really good on our part. As we move on from the cost and the financial proposal, you will see the years of experience. That's also another criteria that we evaluated on the scorecard. And as we move along, service and capacity plan is also another area that we scored. Basically, that is submitted, what basically is identified, like how they, how this food service management company has complied with financial statements. That was sent to y'all as well. And as we move along, accounting and reporting systems were also evaluated. We evaluated promotion of school food service program. And lastly, we also evaluated personal management on there. So basically, scorecard A evaluates the numbers, how we tabled, tabled all that. And that, as you can see, the scores on there. And A plus food service was awarded the contract per TDA because they were the ones, as you move forward to seeing scorecard B, they were with the highest score on there. So that is how the process works, what TDA requires, how to score on these bids. Moving forward, do y'all have any questions for me as I seek your approval for this evening?
This is a company we've been using in the past, correct?
The last five.
This is a company that we've been using in the past?
Yes, back in twenty twenty, they were awarded the RFP, the contract as well.
Awesome. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, if I could get a motion. Okay, have a motion by Marco Reyes.
I'll second.
Have a second by Lionel Gandola. All in favor? Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, moving on to item twelve, F, public hearing of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty twenty-four annual report.
Good, good evening, Mr. Board President. We have Mr. Rochester, who will be presenting our annual report. This is a report required by the state to present based on information from last school year and some of it will be from even the year before. So he is going to be presenting this and we will ask for you to go into a public hearing so that we can also take, and questions from the audience if they would have any questions about this report. Mr. Rochester.
All right, good, good evening, everyone. So to go ahead and begin, I want to tell everybody that this, these slides and the taper report, the taper report right now is available on our website and so will this annual report once we're done. Okay, to go ahead and begin, we have eight sections to our two thousand twenty-three, two twenty-four district annual report. This will be over data from not this current school year, but the previous school year. And we'll have a few areas where we are actually report two years ago for the two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. So in this report, we'll be looking at the Texas Academic Performance Report, known as taper. We'll be looking at briefly at the Financial Standards Report, District Accreditation Status, Campus Performance Objectives, a report on violent or criminal instances on campus, student performance post-secondary institutions and progress towards our HB three goals. So to go ahead and get started, a little bit about the Texas Academic Report, known as taper. This is compiled by TA from the data that we send them on PEMS. PEMS is known as the Public Education Information Management System and Student Assessment Data. So that would be the STAR test. In addition to that, the taper is published as a PDF and again, it's available on our website under the required postings. The cover page of the taper will have our accountability rating, our special education determination status and any distinctions or designations. Please note that as of December two thousand twenty-four, the taper does not include the A through F ratings or distinction, distinction designations. The issue, issuance of A through F ratings under the two thousand twenty-four rule is still pending and subject to change. So diving into the data, we begin with the STAR performance data in which we're looking at the STAR assessment for all subjects. So this would be reading, math, science and social studies as appropriate. And we're looking over through three main categories, approaches and above. So that's meeting the basic threshold to pass the STAR test. Meets and above, so that'd be like an A, like a B or better, and then masters. As you can see, looking at the data, Pierceall ISD, you can see how we compare both with the region and the state there. So from the two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, we held even at fifty-nine percent, where we do see a slight drop there in both the region and the state percentages. And then for the meets and above, again, we do have some work for us, but we did maintain steady there at twenty-nine percent. And then you can see the, the masters there from eight to seven percent. It's a one percent drop. So going into the, the school progress, so what we're looking here are three metrics. So this would be the annual growth, what's also known as the accelerated learning growth, and then the academic growth for domain two A, which we currently don't have to report since it hasn't been released. But what we are reporting right here, you can see the annual growth again for all subjects, for the reading and for all, all grades for, for reading and math, for both the two thousand twenty-four and the twenty-three. So here, what we're looking for annual growth is the growth that a student does from year to year. And you can see those percentages there, how our students are performing and making growth. The accelerated learning, we are looking at the growth of a student who in two thousand twenty-three did not meet standard, but now are meeting standard in two thousand twenty-four. Moving on to our next slide, we have bilingual education and English as a second, as a second language, ESL students. Here we have a side-by-side with the STAR performance for all subjects and then our annual growth for bilingual students. Starting with the STAR performance, we do have the breakout for approaches and above, meets and above, and those students that did masters. We do have a four percent increase from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four for approaches. Where we see there, we're getting more on par there with the region, the state. So we are closing the gap, as it were. The meets and above, we do have a slight drop there from forty-five to thirty-eight percent and where both the region and the state did have a drop as well. And then when we look at the masters there, we're hovering there at like eleven or twelve percent. Looking at the annual growth, where we have again, all grades, both subjects, and then breaking out all grades for reading and then all grades for math. We can see there, we are making gains from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four. Here at Pierceall, going from fifty-nine to sixty-seven percent. The same can be said about the reading and the, the math there from seventy-one to seventy-seven percent, outperforming both the region and the state in terms of bilingual growth for math. Moving on to the STAR participation, so you see a breakout there with how Pierceall ISD compares with both the region and the state for assessment participation. And that assessment participation there for accountability. We have the mobile rate that is presented, those that are not tested and those that are absent. What is interesting about the, I do want to bring your attention to both the, the attendance, the graduation dropout rate. This is for the two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. So it is reported in the two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four data, but it's not the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four data is the year prior. So it's one year behind. Okay, moving on to the graduation profile. So for our graduates in two thousand and three, we do have a breakout there by ethnicity and graduate subpopulation and how those statistics compare to the state. Moving on to the college career readiness. Here, again, we are seeing our performance there for Pierceall, again, compared to the region and the state. Want to bring, bring your attention to the approved industry-based certification. So in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, we were there, right there about seventy-six percent, where the state did change their rule and with the approved for an industry-based certificate, which led to us having a, a drop there to about sixty, sixty-six percent, bringing us about on, on par there with the region, the state. Because of that change by the state, that also does affect our performance for the career military metric there and also the college career military readiness that we see there up in the top. As you also can see, our associate degree percentages there are pretty even there with the region and the state. And the dual, dual credit course completion there is about average with both the region and the state as well. Okay, so the next section of our report goes into the Financial Standards Report. And so, you know, for the public to, to know that we do report our financials to the School Board of Trustees. There is both a district report that looks at the revenues, expenditures and so forth. And then we do have a more micro report there of how that is by campus. The district accreditation status, so TA will give Pierceall ISD its accreditation status. And for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, that was accredited. We do get our accountability right there, which you can see right next to it. And we do have a first, two thousand twenty-three first rating there as an A superior achievement. In addition to that, we do have campus performance objectives. Each campus has a campus improvement plan that's required by the Texas Education Code. The campus improvement plan is comprised of performance objectives that are approved by the School Board of Trustees. And that is based on data analysis and needs assessments. And then these are reported that are kept on each of the campuses' website. We look at data that's in the taper and we do provide periodic progress measures, which are also reported as well on the campus improvement plan and which you can also get from the each campuses' website. The next section there is report on violent or criminal instances. Or according to the Texas Education Code, each campus needs to publish in its annual report any instances that occur on each campus. So we're looking at the number, the rate and type of violent or criminal instance that occurred on each campus. We do have in this report a link to our district report there. And we are happy to report there were no findings that would warrant any Pierceall ISD campus to be identified as an unsafe school. So that is zero. We didn't have any, any violent or criminal instances to report. In our next section, student performance in post-secondary institutions. Texas Education Code also requires that we report on student performance in post-secondary institutions. So these are public schools, so a public four-year university, a two-year public college, an independent college or a university. What is not included is students who may attend a private school, you know, such as like a Baylor University or a Rice University, that, that wouldn't be included. Or if the student went into the military and would later go into college or worked for a while, then wanted to go to college. So this is directly graduating and enrolling into a public college or university next year. So we do have a breakout there, which you can see there at the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board website. We have the number of graduates for each of those and a breakout of their GPA. Our following section reports on the House Bill Three goals that we are required to do. So there are three goals. The percentage of grade three students as they will perform in STAR reading. So we're looking at how well they perform with approaches and meets. And then we have our progress measures there that you can see. This information is reported to the school board. And then the second goal is still looking at our grade three students, how they score for approaches and meets on the STAR math. And then you can see our progress measures that we have for each of those as well. And then we finish with our third goal, the percentage of graduates that meet criteria for our college career military readiness. We have our taper glossary. So the taper report has a lot of acronyms or vocabulary that the public may not be aware of. So you can access the state's taper glossary. So if you, for instance, want to know what STAR meant or what ESL means, those acronyms. So if you, for instance, want to know what star meant or what ESL means, those acronyms are defined for you. So that concludes this report. If you have any questions, comments, or anything you would like to know, you can refer your questions to Dr. Spoor or myself and there's our contact information.
Yes, sir. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? No, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll be going on to item thirteen A Superintendent Reports and Updates.
Attached to your, thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Attached to your board report, you have just basic information on the enrollment update, upcoming dates and events. I'm not going to repeat those. Your principals have already given you a rundown in detail of everything going on on the campuses. We know that we are winding up a school year. We will have graduations for our earliest and our ones who are leaving us and everybody in between gets a promotion ceremony, so we're excited for that. I'm most excited to get to know the principals. We're bringing in some executive coaching, going to work with them, going to meet with them next week. We're deep into the needs assessment for the next school year. And we look forward to really planning out what's gonna, what's gonna happen in just a few short weeks. We start looking at when we come back, so that, we have been very busy. So we will, we will, we work on what our reports look like coming to you in the future, but we'll include a little bit more information other than, than what we've traditionally offered. But for now, you guys have all of those enrollment information in your board report.
Thank you very much. At this time, eight, eighteen PM, the board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Government Code five-five-one dot seven-four deliberation regarding matters related to employment, appointments, resignations, termination, retirements and reassignments. Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-four discussion of the board's self-assessment evaluation roles and duties of board members. And Government Code five-five-one dot zero-seven-six to consider the development or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices.
The time is now ten oh eight P M and the Board of Trustees returns to open session. Um, moving on to item fifteen A, do we have any actions?
Yes. And in the um personnel report with some recommendations for hiring.
Okay, do I have a motion on item fifteen A?
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the employment hirings as President.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Lionel Gondola and a second by Mari Benavides, all in favor. Passes unanimous, Miss Lee. Any, any other actions?
No other actions.
Okay. Seeing that there is no other actions, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion by Lionel Gondola.
I'll say.
Second by Marco Reyes, all in favor. Unanimous, motion approves and the meeting is adjourned at ten oh nine P M.
Okay, it's off, right?